We are gonna now hear about our initial budget for next school year and hear about some mitigation strategies as well.
Great, thank you. So this time last year, we started the conversation regarding this year's budget that we're currently in. Um, and the conversation last year was a lot more robust. Mainly because the state biennium budget, which dictates a lot of our budget, was not finalized. And there was a lot of uncertainty as to where where things would land with that budget. Um, we didn't know if we'd be getting fifteen hundred and ten dollars per pupil. Or if we'd be getting zero dollars per pupil. So as a result, we looked at a series of projections. There was a lot of discussion as to where would the where would this land and how do we budget accordingly? Now that state biennium budget is based on a two-year cycle. We are currently, as we sit here in twenty-three, twenty-four in year one of that, and next year, twenty-four, twenty-five is going to be year two. As a result, next year's figures are set by the state. Because that two-year budget is we're in year one, next year, year two. We know exactly what's coming around the corner as far as what's coming from the state is concerned. So as a result, this year's budget discussions can be a lot more condensed. Additionally, um, a lot of our conversations regarding staffing in the previous years really has been dictated by budget. Looked at the budget first and then try to uh try to uh make staffing work accordingly. Uh, we're gonna try a slightly different strategy this year. So as we get into February, we're actually not going to be looking to talk much about budget at all. Uh, as we talk about staffing, we're gonna be looking at enrollments and need um, to determine what are our staffing needs for next year as opposed to saying this is this is the gap we need to close. Now, we will likely still need to close a gap. And that is very important as we look at the budget. With those conversations, we're looking to begin those more in March. So for today's discussion, uh, really just wanted to provide a snapshot as to what are what are we looking at potentially with a a deficit for next year? And what does the budget look like in broad strokes for next year so that we can have a referendum discussion today? Um, and then also continue uh to have those discussions as we get into March. So I pro- I included a a budget projection within Board Book. Um, and this projection serves two purposes. One, it shows you if we remain status quo, where would we go for next year as far as a deficit is concerned? And two, um, it looks at wha- what a potential two million dollar per year referendum would look like in the next five years. Um, the so I would just first point out that according to that projection, if we remain operations status quo next year, according to the the biennium inputs and just our budget projections, we'd be looking at a deficit of eight hundred and sixty-six, some eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh, so we that's one of the key metrics we want to keep in mind, but I also want to take a moment and celebrate that if we were looking at this same projection um, about six months ago, that same projection was anticipating a a deficit of one point six million dollars. So since um, Deidre has come on to the team, since we've really been diving deep into all these the budget, um, we've essentially been able to mitigate that deficit to eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So that's one point of celebration, but it's still something that we need to worry about or talk about as we get into March. What are we gonna do about that potential deficit? Um, the next thing I'd point out um, is the tax potential, the te- the potential tax impact of a two million dollar per year referendum. Now, every time I present a a projection to you, it's with the most complete information that we have at the time of presenting it. Uh, the since the last board meeting we had together, I was able to attend a Baird workshop. And we were able to get some updated metrics, specifically uh update on our shared cost tables. Without getting in too much into the weeds, essentially, it's important to know that, um, so the revenue limits made up of property tax and state aid. And essentially, the more state aid a district gets, the less property tax has to be raised within that revenue limit. That aid is highly dependent on how much districts spent. So the information that we had in that Baird workshop was the budget information from all the district schools in Wisconsin. Um, so essentially, we could put better project, pr- better predict what we would get in as far as aid is concerned next year and years after that. Uh, so as a result, um, and and that's a very, very big summary of of the updates. But essentially, before this meeting, I presented the here is even more up-to-date information. Um, so all that to say, the last time we came together, the projection showed that of the effect of a two million dollar per year referendum would be about sixty-nine dollars difference on a three hundred thousand dollar house. So again, just to summarize that, essentially, we were saying that a two million dollar per year referendum would be a sixty-nine dollar increase to the school district portion of the tax, um, of an individual's tax bill next year. Now, with the current projections, we're looking at that um, tax impact is likely to be less. Um, so it was a twenty-three cent increase to the mill rate. Now we're looking at a four cent increase to the mill rate. Um, so instead of a sixty-nine dollar difference on that three hundred thousand dollar house, that same referendum would potentially be a twelve dollar increase um, on that school district portion of the property tax. So that's what we're looking at next year. And on the projection, you can see that is that seven dollars and ninety-nine cents mill rate projection for the next year. Um, so a bit of of a bit of exciting news as far as the the mill rate projections are concerned and the potential tax implications as a result of of a potential referendum, did include in the board packet a full breakdown of potential uh, property values and what those what what the tax burden would potentially be as a result of this referendum or a referendum, I should say. Uh, so wanted to share that as well. Um. The last thing I wanted to say, and of course, we could have a bit of a discussion if you'd like. Uh, so related to the a potential referendum, which are the next items on the agenda. Uh, we did include a two potential um options for the board to consider regarding a potential referendum, um. I guess logo logos, if you will. So that's included in in the board packet, and that's something that we could come back to after um, if if the board does decide to go to referendum in the next resolutions here. Uh, but wanted to include that as as options here um, for a point of discussion um as we go along in this agenda. I just want also for the sake of transparency, as we acknowledged in previous meetings, we have begun a partnership with the Donovan Group. And this is also the result of said partnership, looking at potential ways that we could graphically um, address the ways that of the the items within our the referendum um, and present these logos to you as well. So.
And yeah. Yeah, just to clarify, so um, as we look in, nothing else about the potential referendum question has changed. We are looking to use the dollars to support our schools, right? So that's where some of these kind of the wording around what we're using the dollars for is safe, skilled and supported. Safe still means the same thing it always meant. It means we want to increase safety measures within our schools. Our schools are perfectly safe as they are, but we want the absolute pinnacle of safety and we want it sooner than later. These are things that we can do with those additional dollars now that would have, we would have had to just slowly chip away at over time. Some of those include increased cameras around doors, some alarming on some of the external doors if they're open during off-hours and things like that. Um, that is a newer piece of the safety puzzle that we are talking about now is more alarming on some of the doors that allow for some of those things. Key fob access, which allows us better control who's in the building and who's not. Um, and then also some traffic mitigation strategies for Fifteenth Street as well as a little help. Continued help with the Rossin parking lot as that's o- overtime been a significant concern. So that's really what we're wrapping into the idea of schools being safe. Um, the skilled is when we're talking about those K-12 articulated pathways where students actually get some additional teacher time at the elementary to be able to hone their skills in technology, to be able to hone their skills in construction, to be able to start exploring health cares so that student is the healthcare field, so that students have a better capacity to access all of the things we have within our system and graduate from us with an actual plan that they're ready to go out and do in the world. Um, and then supported is really, that's where it helps us mitigate some of that budget deficit where we, as Dan indicated, we have worked really hard to find as many efficiencies within the system as we can and cut the original deficit, the projected deficit almost in half, right? So we're getting there, but we have really done what we could within the budget without having to have removed any services on behalf of our students. So the supported means it not only helps us to mitigate a bit of the deficit that we have right now. But it really helps us to also make sure that we can stay competitive within the field. We know there's a enormous teacher shortage across the state and we want to be able to, you know, provide compensation for our employees that keeps us competitive in our area. We don't want them leaving us because the place down the street is offering slightly more money than we do. But we want to be able to be competitive with both our salaries and our benefits. So that's what supported means is it allows us to support some of the things that we're doing right now around continued support for students' mental health, around continued support for um, all of the students that we have and the services that they need, but as well as supporting our teachers so that we have some consistency and attention of teachers over it. So as you look at, then you need to be able to capture all of that that you guys have been talking about long before I got here and that we've been talking about a lot since I did get here into a visual, so people start to really understand where their dollars would go if the community chooses to support us and partner with us on helping us do a few of those things. So that's really what sort of summarized in your logo and then there is a whole lot of communication that goes with it pending your decision to put a question on the ballot. But tonight, we were um, continue to let the board meeting go on and let you make your decisions, but as you saw them in Friday notes, many of you and gave some feedback. Those are the ones we've started narrowed it down to. So as you have pending your vote, continued feedback on those. Please share that with us because we're gonna choose one pretty quickly here and keep the bus moving once you guys make that decision. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I follow this along pretty well. Uh, I would benefit from your comment about how you're meeting with Baird. You referenced statewide expenses and how that affect our specifics. I am only sort of thought, could you go over that?
Yeah, totally. So essentially, you the amount of aid a district gets is contingent on how much everybody spends essentially. So the state looks at every single district in Wisconsin and says, well, everybody spent X amount of dollars. You spent Y, um, so because you spent Y, you will get Z dollars. Um, so essentially, when before that conference, we didn't know exactly how much every single district in the state was anticipating to spend um, in this year. At that conference, essentially Baird had access to all the state school district data on expenditures budgeted for this year. So as a result, they could preemptively look at, well, this you are, the state is saying every every school district is going to spend X. Therefore, you, South Milwaukee, are going to spend Y, which is a certain percentage of that, and you will get Z aid. So it's having a more complete look of the entire puzzle, if you will. Um, so as a result, because they because Baird had the budgeted expenditures for every single district, and we did not before that. Um, we could better predict what our aid would be next year, which in turn impacts how much state uh state aid and property tax relate to each other within the revenue limit. So we're going to project it to get more aid than what we were anticipating previously. Which as a result means the revenue limit is the same, um, but it's essentially less property tax to get up to that revenue limit. So that's how that that would be the difference in in the projections.
Our shared revenue is going to be a little bit higher than we anticipated.
So the shared costs table is different and the as a result, the state aid, state aid is going to increase.
What's what's the actual label at state aid, which there's several?
Yeah, you general aid, equalization aid, yeah.
Um, and just for the general public as you're listening, some districts get a hundred percent state aid and very little from their, close to a hundred percent and very little from their local property tax. That's rare. Most districts, it's a balance of state aid and property tax. So the higher your percent of students who come from backgrounds of economic disadvantage, the higher the percent of aid that you get from the state, which keeps you within that revenue limit that we have to stay in to get there with a balance of state aid and property tax dollars. The higher the aid, the lower the property tax.
It's like, so it truly is a teeter totter. And um, I've also heard it like you get you get your your glass of coffee and and or your mug of coffee rather, and the question is how much of his coffee, how much of it is creamer? Um, so the the idea being your cup is always full of property tax or state aid, right? So that the question is how much? Um, so yes, just like Deidre said, so some 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 school districts literally completely run on property tax and very little state aid. South Milwaukee specifically, about two, more than two-thirds of our funding within the revenue limit is um, is is state aid. And the remainder of that is property tax. So essentially, the more of that two-thirds becomes state aid, the less property tax is needed for to fill that revenue limit. And that's exactly what we're seeing with next year's projection.
So just one question. So if we look at the example, what portion, what's our total cost? And then how much we've like, we're fourteen million and then how much will we get from the state in this next budget about?
So I I don't wanna, I'd have to look at the projection in more and in more detail, but I I would, I'd have to get back to you on the specifics, but essentially and general budget of some mid-forties million dollars. And then you're gonna have a mixture, the majority of the revenue limit, which is not the entirety of that forty some odd million dollars um, is going to be state aid, the majority of that, and then the remainder of it is going to be property tax.
All right, moving on. Uh, we're gonna ask to approve a resolution authorizing the school district to exceed our revenue limit. Is that you again?
So strictly speaking, I guess, Jen, I'll look to you as far as how we should practically go about this. The resolution is attached. Um, and the question would be if this is something that we would want to approve of, um, to approve the districts going two million dollars above the revenue limit through referendum.
Think we should read the language in the resolution word for word, just to make sure that we are all in the
And just to be clear, I'm assuming that a board member has to do that or correct?
I don't know that it makes any difference who has to do it, but somebody has to read it into the record word for word. So either you or Augie are welcome to do that.
Uh, resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. Be resolved by the school board and of the South Milwaukee School District, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section one twenty-one point nine one, Wisconsin statutes, on a non-recurring basis by two million dollars per year for five years, beginning with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and ending with the twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year for operational and maintenance purposes, oh, expenses, sorry. Including for safety, educational programming, technology and staff retention. Adopted and recorded January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Maybe to some people, this resolution is really, um, if we approve is authorizing the district to put a question on the ballots. Um, that's technically the next one.
Yep. This one just says that you will allow the district to exceed uh the revenue limit. The next resolution um, is to actually put that approval on.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. And I just wanna, I wanna be able to convert each step and
Non-legalies?
So that everybody listening really understands every step. Okay, so then this first resolution is for authorizing the district to exceed revenue. Since there are no questions, you would read the motion.
I move that the board approved the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million dollars per year for five years for non-recurring purposes.
Second.
I.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi. On to the next one. Resolution to go to referendum and put it on election for April twenty twenty-four.
This one has to be read into the record word for word.
I don't think so. It's probably helpful just to go through what's in each of the paragraphs.
Oh, you want me to read? Well, I thought we were just doing our personal reading. Sorry, I'll read that.
Summarize each paragraph or?
I'll I'll read each one, and then if there's a question, I'll pause and then we continue on to the next one. Yes.
Covered all of our bases.
Right. Resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million dollars per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. We good? Okay. Whereas the school board of South Milwaukee School District, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, do I have to say the district? Has heretofore duly adopted the resolution entitled resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million dollars per year for five years for non-recurring purposes, the revenue limit resolution. And y'all good? Okay. Whereas the school board deems it to be desirable and in the best interest of the district and to direct the district clerk to submit the revenue limit resolution to the electors for approval or rejection at the regularly scheduled election to be held April second, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be resolved by the school board of the district as follows. Section one referendum election date. The district clerk is hereby directed to call a referendum election to be held in the district at a regularly scheduled election to be held on April twenty, April second, twenty twenty-four for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the district of the proposition of whether the revenue limit resolution shall be approved. Section two notice to electors, the district clerk is directed to give notice by A, causing a notice of election is substantially the form attached here to as exhibit A, to be published in the Southwest now in the issue published immediately prior to the fourth Tuesday before the referendum election. B, causing a notice of referendum which includes the fax mail of the sample ballot in substantially the form attached here too as exhibit B, to be published in the Southwest now in the issue published immediately preceding the referendum election. This notice shall be posted in each polling place on election day. If any of the municipalities within the district use an electronic voting system employing a ballot label and ballot card, the notice of referendum set forth in exhibit B shall also be included in true actual size copy of the ballot label and ballot card in the form in which they will appear on election day. Section three polling places an hour. The district electors must vote at the referendum election at the time and polling places at which they cast their ballots in regularly scheduled elections. Section four, referendum election officials, the election officials appointed in each of the municipalities within the district shall be, shall conduct the election. Section five, official referendum ballot form. The ballot to be used at the referendum election shall be prepared in accordance with the provisions of sections five point six four two and seven point zero eight one A, Wisconsin statutes. The ballot shall be substantially in the form attached here too as exhibit C. The district clerk shall cause to be printed sufficient ballots for use at said referendum election both as actual ballots and those polling places which do not use voting machines and as absentee ballots where voting machines are used as specimen ballots. The latter to be of different and easily identifiable color from the actual ballot. The form of the ballot shall be filed with the official responsible for providing the ballots for election and the district clerk shall file a copy of the ballot with the clerk of each county having territory within the district as soon as possible after the date hereof. But in no event later than seventy days prior to the election as provided in section eight point three seven, Wisconsin statutes. If the district prepares the ballots, they should be delivered to the municipal clerks running the election in at least twenty-five days prior to the election to allow the municipal cler- clerks to comply with their obligation to provide absentee ballots under section seven point one five Wisconsin statutes. The municipal clerk of the municipal municipalities with the district shall receive applications for absentee ballots and initial the same one issued to qualified absentee voters. Section six canvas, the returns of the referendum election shall be canvassed by the board of canvassers of each municipality within the district. Each board of canvassers shall certify the returns of the referendum election to the district clerk. The district clerk and two other reputable citizens appointed to the district clerk prior to the date of the referendum election shall act as the district's boards of canvassers for the referendum election. This board of canvassers shall meet in an open session no no later than nine AM on the Tuesday after election to determine the results of the referendum election. The canvas shall be open to the public and the district clerk is directed to give due notice of said meeting. Section seven, DPI notice, persuading of the provisions of section one two one nine one three, Wisconsin State statutes, the district clerk shall notify the Department of Public Instructions of the date of the referendum election and shall provide the department with copies of the revenue limit resolution within ten days of the adoption of the revenue limit revolution resolution and shall further notify the department of the results of the referendum within ten days following the election using the method prescribed by the department. Adopted and recorded January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I don't think we need to.
Okay. Okay.
Scroll down and read.
Take a moment to read the rest.
Should we maybe just read what the actual question? I know we, I think we did it previously.
So the the question can be found at the very end of the document, and that's what would appear on the ballot itself. And that the question itself is exactly as was discussed in the last meeting. Um, and so Augie, maybe it'd be good to to read the the question just for the record as well. Which you 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 just one page of love it.
Question. So the South Milwaukee District, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section one twenty-one point nine Wisconsin statutes on a non-recurring basis by two million dollars per year for five years, beginning with the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year and ending with the twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year for operational and maintenance expenses including the safety, educational programming, technology and staff retention. Yes or no?
Just purely procedurally, um, because I know this is the mechanism that actually gets us on the ballot. Jen, I know we've talked about this in in meetings, um, but just by way of background, what are some of the meetings that you've had with with legal counsel to make sure that this is the proper form airtight exactly as we need it?
Yeah, that's actually. Yeah, that's actually, um, Corals and Brady is our legal council with this. Dan's been working with them very, um, carefully. They're the ones that created all of the documents down. Nobody in the district actually created the documents, legal council created the documents. And after it was posted or right when it was posted on Friday, um, on Monday, Dan called Corals again and just said, hey, this is what we have posted. We still have one more day to make changes. If we need to make changes to anything, we did, um, double check. They double checked and gave the thumbs up to us.
And it's worth mentioning. So some of these exhibits that are within the document, they go to the municipal court, uh, municipal clerk rather. And they also go to the county clerk and we send them back to Corals and Brady, make sure that some of these thing, the postings take place in the correct timeline. We, we send it to the newspaper within the timelines, um, stated within the document. Strictly speaking, the, this, this really initiates the next steps. Um, so should you vote yes, then we, I take it to the clerk tomorrow and we, I start emailing back and forth again with Corals and Brady. Um, so strictly, just like Jen said, this is really, th- this is so, um, intricate that we don't want to get anything wrong. So it really behooves us to, to have legal counsel drafted completely.
And it comes with a multiple statutory requirements. It's already so gracefully noted in each one of its um, that you just want to make sure you're hitting on all of those. So that's why you hire external legal counsel to do so.
Okay, other questions?
Comment. We're about to do a big thing here. We've, we've gone here with eyes wide open. You know, speaking for myself, I think everyone in this room, um, board members, service to the community with a, with a, with a, uh, heavy sense of responsibility to the financial responsibility. We're spending other people's money here asking for it. And for our critical, uh, uh, central purpose of any community, our, our students. And now we haven't arrived at this moment lately. This has been a thorough, thorough journey. And, uh, we arrived here with a great, good, the best of intentions, sacred intentions and, um, probably a better word, but heavy hearts. Uh, and I, I welcome this moment and, uh, we're about to ask the community for additional support to operate our school district for the good of the community, for the good of our students. And I, I welcome this, the, the efforts we've all engaged in. It's important.
Alright. I move that the board approved the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million dollars per year for five years on non recurring purposes.
One second.
I.
Hi.
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 I. Motion passes unanimously. Great work, everybody.
Can I say one point thing like? Also, you know, reason, we've mentioned this multiple times, the reason why we're doing this is the lack of from our state representatives. And so, I mean, we wouldn't be in probably the situation if it, none of this is just a reminder, none of this was our doing in a sense, um, just lack of support over numerous years. So just remind people that because of this is why we're doing this, so.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
So.
I'm going to continue to advocate, um, with our local legislators in our state for continued support for our public schools because they're a matter and they're important. And that was something that actually in Dan's group with the strategic plan that the group really wanted to make sure continues to be part of the work here in the school district of South Milwaukee, because that is important. We do great work. And it's important that it gets supported by the state as well. Sorry, Patrick, you got a question?
Oh, no, not yet. Sorry.
Um, can we just, before we move on off of this, we looked at.
Logos. Yep.
So now I have a question. We did, we did D three, correct? We did D three, but then there also is.
That was just, we just. We just said that one.
That was that ten minutes where.
Yep.
I almost did.
Riveting.
That's riveting.
It was, yeah. And I lumped them all together with chat conversations, so. It felt a little confusing. So this was talked about on the twenty third for.
Yep.
Um. We both.
No, we did not. We did not put it forward as a vote. It's really just an opportunity for board members to give some feedback.
Okay.
We got feedback from several people who had a chance to look through them before and that narrowed us down to um, the couple that are in front of you tonight. So there was a longer document that had all kinds in there and we vetted them by a bunch of people and narrowed it down to the couple that are in there. Um, so we don't necessarily need a vote, but if people want to weigh in and give their two cents on which one they think is in an informal way, are we okay to have that discussion? And if you didn't notice it yet. Um, uh, to give us some feedback on if you like either one of these or if there was something else you want us to do to adjust them. Um, like Dan said, some of that came through the partnership with Donovan. They helped us with a couple of them. Several came, um, with Mr. Bader working on them as well at the same time. So we've been spending a lot of time looking at what's in there and what does it message about what we really want for our students? Because that's what we're asking for the dollars to support.
Um, and but then the first one just kind of excludes that. So I, I would say like if that were to be the R one that we chose, we need to get like it's, it's all about that whole thing of telling our story like.
Right.
I would be confused if I was just a voter getting that in the mail or seeing that somewhere like, what does that even mean? Um, the other one provides what that means.
Provides more explanation.
It could be an explanation of what those three words mean, safe, skilled and supported.
Yeah, I agree. I like that deeper explanation of, of those, the, and I think this one's lighter, like it just has more like visually more room to breathe. Um, maybe like adding a little bit of black into one of these little bits to help maybe pop, maybe the date or something might help, but I.
Smaller words.
Yeah, something. Yeah.
Um, so.
And that I like.
Yeah, you have one. Two. Thank you for that feedback. You have two. One is more of like a Facebook banner and like what goes on like the head of your website pieces. The other one starts to go out on all of your communications. So the goal was to try to capture as much information as you can without it being so busy that nobody even looks at it. And so, yeah. So that was why there's two, the longer rectangular one that is Facebook banners, your website banner, things like that, where you actually don't usually include any more detail. And then the other one goes on everything else. Anything else, Dan, that you wanted to add about that?
Um, think of this as your elevator pitch. You know, if you are meeting with someone. If you are meeting with somebody in the community and you hand them a piece of paper, they should recognize it from what they got in the mail or what. Um, and those kind of key, the keywords are, are what we developed, how we show it. Any of this can be used in either of the formats, right? So if, if you like the bullet points, they could go underneath, right? They, if you like the airiness of it, the color formats can change and be open. Um, but yeah, I mean, everybody, uh, has a name and you recognize them by the name. This is the name of your project. You know, from now till April. Um, so it's just built with that in mind. Um, I will say in the first one with the icons that are there, that will translate directly into things on the website into things in the mailers that are sent home. Um, into the other, you know, any other format that goes out. That doesn't mean they can't be used in the other one, but they don't kind of fit with the theme of the rocket.
You're saying these three logos are embed are going to be, they're on the website as like.
They would be.
Okay.
Now that you've.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. So anytime we talk about security upgrades, it'll be a bullet point with that, with that lock. Same thing with the technology. Another visual cue that we've learned from other referendums that have happened that, um, I've heard from colleagues that they've done too.
So my two cents is I like the first two. Are there any other icons for skilled rather than like a light bulb with like either a brain inside of it or crackling electricity? And you look, is that what it is?
There are, there are. Uh, it is a, uh, it is a brain and a light bulb. Um, there are.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
That's a brain.
That's what I think it is. Um, it, that's what it looks like. Um, yeah, there are volumes of ones. So we.
Yeah.
Come back with a different one.
Yeah. So I guess lock is simple, support is simple, but I would say can we, something that's more of it besides the ambiguity of what that is.
More familiar.
Yeah.
Just to, just clarify, do you like the light bulb idea and or, um, something else? So can I throw a monkey wrench in? Um, the word skilled. I'm trying, I, I, I have trouble with that because I don't think it speaks to all of our families. And even when I heard you describe it.
Yep.
The first thing I wrote down is that speaking to our gifted and talented. And in your one sentence, I didn't hear it. I mean, I heard it because I know, but I didn't hear it. If I'm a parent of a young child who's on this gifted and talented track and you're talking about construction.
Oh, sure.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like skilled look to me is, you know, it reads a skilled trait.
And that's about to the icon supplement that I'm thinking about has to do with like a gear.
Yeah.
You know, goes in that direction.
So.
Right.
I don't know. Um, other than that, I, I like the bullet points because it helps tell the story. Um, but I like the contrast of the red and black and I do like the, I like kind of, there's some parts from all of them I like. But, um, but yeah, I, again, and I'm just one, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, the colors definitely go to what we have at our.
Yep.
All of our stadiums, football stadiums, all the banners that Auntie's doing in the gym, the, the uniforms of the kids. So I, I think that's the colorway.
Where the second one has more information, the first one is, is, I think it's better branded.
And the other thing about the second one is that's not the South Milwaukee Rocket.
I was gonna say that.
Yeah. It looks like something from the fifties.
I caught that.
So are you suggesting changing the word skill to?
I'm just putting it out there.
We've changed those words a bunch of times too, because every time we read them, we go, wait a minute, doesn't that say what we're trying to get it to say? So we're open to changing it.
When I think about skill, I think you're teaching people skills, skills for, for your life, life skills. That's what I read into it. Or I mean, skilled trades pops up, but you were giving people, we're giving our students the, the knowledge to be able to get out into the world that they're skilled enough when they leave, but they're just not book smart, but they understand where they're going to be going in their lives and that these are just skills you, you pick up in learning, but as you go out in the business world, there's going to be other skills you pick up with whatever career, whatever job that you go to, so. But if we come up with a better word.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just, just putting it out there. It's just me. Just one.
Any suggestions on what word we would like in there that starts with an S?
I know.
Right?
I think the other thing is like, is the way it rolls off.
It's harder than. It is, right? Yes. I was. And you, and I'm totally fine with it. We, again, we've changed a bunch of these, a bunch of times because then we look at it the next morning and we say, wait, that doesn't say what we needed to say.
Well, and that's, I like the fact it's got the three S's. It's easy to say self skilled and supported. I've just, just chasing this cat around the room a little bit. Uh, by skilled, we mean successful. And that would apply to every child as, as those skilled, um, safe, successful, supported. Uh, because we are hoping to further our efforts to achieve of all our children.
Whatever they want to do.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Everybody. Yeah.
They're all.
And expanding their skills so that they know they can use them in a bunch of different ways.
Yeah.
So.
That does work. I mean, under that bullet of, of skilled or successful, uh, also is the supported technology, right? So it's, it's success in the classroom too. So that, that applies to each thing that goes under that letter or that, that bullet.
Articulation, the technology.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Yep.
Okay. Um, so then question, while we're having a bit more of an informal discussion, are you okay if we play around with this a little bit and start to move with it? Or do you want us to come back for, for the board's approval on an official logo? We're happy to send it out one more time for feedback in email or whatnot as well. Yep. Just timing wise, I know. Yeah, we gotta start. There's a few pieces that have to start moving.
So what are, what's the timeline? Like when would you get something to us? And if we want to have something?
Thing in Friday notes and maybe give everyone until Monday to give one last way in. Is that good?
Yep.
Are we good with it?
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah.
I think you can agree on the successful or the skilled, um, that would help with communication to inform the community and our staff of what we're doing that we want to do before Monday.
So I'm going to go for this again, the way, the way I read it, the way I say it, the way I feel it, safe. One skilled, two, one, two, three, supported. I'm safe, I'm skilled and I'm supported. That's why I still say stay with skilled because of the way it reads instead of safe, successful and supported. So. I, yeah, I hear you. And you, you know, we represent every child in this district. Every child is our concern in every manner. So.
Yeah. And some of it, remember this is just.
Speaks to.
And I want to take that monkey wrench and throw it back in there because if we do run with successful, I think a better ring, but then it kind of changes the order is save, supported, successful.
Yeah.
Because that captures.
I can change that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do like that.
So why don't we mock it up with both? With a few, the icons, change out the icons, changing the shape a bit of the racket in the second one. Clarifying some of the bullet points, maybe making those in black and then that's sort of what you'll see. And then you can kind of give some final pieces of advice and then we'll run it back by again, the communications firm, just to make sure we're getting their branding expertise and away we'll go.
I so do it.
Yeah.
Can we throw it to the student council or student?
We, timing wise, that's the challenge, right? Um, so.
And I think.
Side on the first versions or the second version. So instead of tweaking both of them, because there really anyone, anybody excited about the second one, the rocket one.
Yeah, I was just gonna say a couple of people did like that one. We can put them both out there.
They wasn't, yeah. And I think in the color and I think kind of even to the point of, you know, we've got this. So if we say like safe, supported, successful or whatever we go with, you know, we've got bullet points, um, underneath. Is there a way to connect the bullet points to the term, you know? Like safe, then what does that mean? That's our security and our, you know, that there's a connection there.
Yeah. And remember a logo always goes with something else that has a lot more explanation to it, right? So a logo outside of where it's, is never sitting there just on its own, right? It does if you intend to use it for twenty years or whatever, right? A logo starts to signify a particular thing, but given the timeline, just as a reminder, like this always goes with something. It's on a letterhead, it's in a mailer, it's on a thing that has a ton more information that goes with it.
I think, you know, the thing. Security is obvious. Is obviously our language was not the parents' language. It was not somebody who has a kindergartner. You know?
Yep.
My first child's four and I see this.
Yeah.
What is that? So that's where like there, to me that feels disconnected, you know, like that. So even though it's there, it's like, what is that? And then you just have.
Skills. And I was like, well, what is that? Okay.
And so.
Yep.
So I think that's kind of where it just goes to that story and they can't, you know, so even, even though we're going to have materials with the logo and the bullet points. Again, we've just got to make sure that that articulation is a big word. It's a, you know, it really is. I mean.
Rights. I mean, yeah. Well, it's really, yeah.
Dump truck, I mean, I, you know, that's like when I have a four year old son, that's what I knew.
Yeah.
You know, so again, it's like we start, we're started at that right there. I don't even think that means anything to anybody.
If you were to scroll over like one of the bullet points, could it expand upon that?
Yeah, well, that's ultimately what the icons in the first one help you with, right? Because anytime you see it, it always has a link to a very lengthy explanation on what that means, right? With videos and things like that, yeah.
Pause you right there, because.
Yeah.
Because a lengthy explanation is gonna go in and.
Well, no, the detail on what that means we're talking about, right? Because you can say safety and people will go, oh, so the place. Right, so you have that detail to explain, no, the place is not unsafe.
Right.
But this is what we'd like to do to enhance and increase safety measures, right? So not four pages, but. And as much as we can do in quick, short video, the better, right? That's the medium that people tend to respond to the most.
So uh, uh, and I don't want to keep spending a lot of time on it, but like as you look at the bullet points, so like you said, enhance security.
Yeah.
Like I like that. Because then it's like, right, you you know, it's still a bullet point, it's two words, but it's like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Or enhance safety, what I, you know, but it's like, it's still, it's telling that story right there and just a very quick. Bullet pointed, you know, um, technology updates, okay, like I get that, you know.
Yeah.
Um, stat retention, I get that, recurring cost, don't know what it is, but I get it.
What if it's a like K to twelve career exploration pathway or something like that?
I mean. Yeah.
Yeah, there's there's different ways to get news to explain it, right? That's the point of having you guys look at it is to go timeout, is I glance at that rightly? This draws my eye, this distracts me, this is not reading right to me, like that's the whole point of having people take a peek at it.
Yeah, and I've seen learning journeys, uh, phrase used that way as an explanation of what a K twelve, that's, it's, it's a. Technical term, right, and then colloquially. It's a learning journey.
And somewhere what we're reading today and also not this educational program. I would understand educational program where I feel the articulated pathways is. Not a simple word.
Feel like I need to get a dictionary and a thesaurus. I mean, I don't.
No, I know, so that's the whole point of, you know, it's good, this is good feedback, it's the point of um, looking at it together, right? Is what you're looking for here is what immediately as you look at it, what caught your eye or what distracted you? That's really what you're looking for in a logo and then the other stuff that goes with it. Then you keep watching and looking for to say, oh, I like this about it or this caught my eye or, right, and.
How it made you feel.
Yeah, that's important, right, like, did that draw you to, I want to know more about. Hey, that doesn't mean anything to me whatsoever, right? That's kind of the whole idea of it, is it supposed to draw people in to get more information?
And I think there were enough of us that liked. Both, so yeah, you can play with all, all of them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're pretty good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
Well, then we'll get something Friday.
So are we gonna do our rocket or leave the generic rocket?
Um, I will do that, it's seem pretty universal here.
Because you know, somebody's gonna see that.
You know, it's always gonna say, yeah, no, no. Yeah.
Okay, so everybody watch your emails for.
One last way in and then we'll run it by the experts, if we have an opportunity, John. Yes, running it by kids like even in the marketing class, really good idea, as they're actually studying marketing right now. Um, so can't take it any further than that likely given, I mean, but certainly one, at least an opportunity to run it by some kids is a great idea.
Yeah. Staff likes school, like.
Yeah.
You have a senior, uh, sorry, the student council or like.
Yeah.
I like the marketing class, I think that.
Yeah, I mean, the marketing class is exactly what they're studying, so it would feel like a good place to get some feedback from students, but.
Yeah.
Um, we'll see, we'll do our very, very best to get some feedback on it.
All right, thank you, thank you. We are.
Our attendance report, I think.